Good evening. It is Monday, April 16th, 2018, 6:00 PM. Time to call the Garden City Council Meeting to order. I'm going to ask Pastor Gary Johnson from Woodline Baptist Church to come up and lead us in our invocation. All stand, please.
Good day to be here. Let's go to our Heavenly Father in prayer. We come before you again, Lord, and we thank you again just for the time of the year that we can celebrate the coming of spring. We're glad for warm weather. We look forward to what you're going to do in our lives this spring. We thank you for everyone gathered at this place tonight for the city council meeting. We've asked that you would continue to provide our mayor and our city council members and other leaders in our city with the great wisdom that they need, the patience they need, and, Lord, would you provide what they need every day? We trust that unto you, and we thank you in Christ's name. Amen.
Remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'm going to ask the clerk to call roll, please.
Mayor Proton?
Here.
Mayor Proton Kickleyder?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Daniel?
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Here.
And Councilmember Tice?
Here.
This time, we're going to open our meeting up to anyone who would like to come forward and speak for three minutes. If there's anybody here that would like to come forward and speak for three minutes, you would state your name and address for the record when you come up, please. Good evening.
My name is Dr. Tanya Howard Hall. My address is 46 Hasty Point Road, Port Wentworth. And I'm here on behalf to let you know that I'm running for school board, District Eight. I'm a native of this district. I graduated from Tompkins High School. I attended Florida A&amp;M University, and I have a doctoral degree in curriculum and instruction. I've served as a student, a parent of three children, all three graduating from schools in this district, Savannah High in Windsor. I served as a classroom teacher, district parent liaison, and also a central office administrator. I was a title-one program manager, where I have experience with writing grants, curriculums, and have assisted with managing a federal budget of a combined $18 million. I'm running for school board because I have a deep passion for education. Currently, only 58% of our third graders are reading on grade level. By the time a child enters third grade, they should be reading to learn and not learning to read. Our graduation rate is 84.3%, and that's a very good rate. However, only 55% of those graduates are college-ready. We need to ensure that they are all college-ready, so that when they complete high school, whether they decide to go to armed forces, they should have the ability to have great reading skills, math skills, and analytical skills, which will help them to earn a living wage. I just want to let everybody know that I'm serious about this campaign, and I'm running because I feel that it's time for change, and I really appreciate your time for listening to me, and I ask for your support on May 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question. I'm not supposed to do this, but I assume then that part of Garden City is in...
Yes. This school district, it starts from the Effingham County line and extends all the way to Styles Avenue. However, in Garden City, the side that is on the same side as Mercer and Groves, that's District Eight. The other side of the street, that's District Three. And then it extends in Woodsville, and that's where I was born and raised, in the Woodville community, which is considered as Garden City, and the Cloverdale area, all the way to Styles Avenue, and Gardley on Benton Avenue, that's considered as Savannah, and that's also District Eight, and Tremont Park.
Okay. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to come forward and speak for three minutes? We don't have any formal requests, so we're going to move into our public hearings. We have a number of public hearings. I'm going to call this public hearing to order. We have PC 1808 resoning request, Yasa Dessa, representing J. Garden City. LLC, property owner, request to rezon 4820 Augusta Road from C-2 to C-2A. PIN number 6001304041. And I'm going to ask Ron Alexander to come up and give us an overview of this, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Case PC 1808 was heard by the Planning Commission at the April 10th, 2018 hearing. Request is to rezon 4820 Augusta Road from a C-2 to a C-2A zone. Mr. Desi currently has plans submitted and approved for a convenience store and three tenant spaces adjacent to the store there. To my knowledge, Mr. Desi has no tenants for the three spaces at this time. Other than that, I'll open it up for questions.
Now, he meets all the requirements for this?
He does.
Has there been any change?
Yes, sir.
Good. Council, have any questions? Thank you. And I don't see anybody from him here tonight. Is that correct?
I don't see anybody either. No, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that would want to come forward and speak in favor of this rezoning Seeing no movement, is there anyone that would want to come forward and speak opposed?
Sylvia Swan, Barnado Avenue. My property backs right up to this building. Back in 2010, we were standing here in the same spot about the beer and wine license. I'm asking y'all to please do not give them a C-2A license. Maybe a C-2B and W license, but not a C-2A license, because that means those three tenants, whoever goes in there, can get their alcohol license. Or they can, he can open up a liquor store, a bar, a strip joint, whatever over there. I don't want the crap in my backyard, being nice about it. I'm asking y'all to please go with B and W. If y'all decide on anything, do not go with pure alcohol, because once you start mixing more alcohol, more panhandlers are going to be out there in the parking lot hanging out and everything, and I just don't want it in my backyard. There's enough problems as it is on 21 with other businesses that sells beer and wine and everything. So I'm just asking y'all, please vote no, and if you have to vote yes, please vote only B and W. And that's all, unless somebody has a question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to come forward and speak opposed? Thank you, Ron. I'm going to close this hearing. I'm going to open up PC 1810 zoning text amendment request. Vinnie Patel, property owner, request to amend the code of ordinances of Garden City, Georgia as amended by amending Chapter 90, Section 90-47, to allow for the permitted use of a pest control business in an M zoning district. I'm going to open up this public hearing. Ron, if you'd give us an overview of this, please.
At the request of Mr. Patel, a proposed text amendment has been drafted by the city attorney to amend the city ordinance to allow pest control in a mixed-use zone, subject to Board of Appeals approval. The purpose of this access is to establish the use in the current city code, mixed-use districts. As further, as future individual cases are brought before the Board of Appeals, the text is intended to create a classification in the mixed-use districts, which the city can properly receive these type cases for review. This is not an action to put forth concerning a ruling on individual case or property. Any case of such uses will be individually brought before the Board of Appeals for individual review in accordance with the text at a separate hearing. This was brought before the Planning Commission, as I said, at the April 10th meeting. At that meeting, the Planning Commission, by majority vote, recommended approval of the request.
Okay. Thank you. Council, have any questions? Is anyone here from the petitioner? Ron, does nobody hear from the petitioner?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this? Anyone would like to come forward and speak opposed? All right, I'm going to close this public hearing. We have PC 1811 rezoning request. Simon Phillips, property owner, request to rezon 4805 Old Lewisville Road and Zero Burnett Street from RA to I-1. PIN number 6092503007 and 6092503006. I'm going to open up this public hearing and get you to give us a little overview, Ron.
Case PC 1811 was heard before the Planning Commission at the April 10th, 2018 hearing. Request is rezon the property from its present RA zone to an I-1 zone district for further use as a commercial contracting business. Prior to making a recommendation, the commission evaluated the merits on proposed amendments according to the criteria, enactment criteria, in 9201 of the city code. The property seems to meet all the criteria. Doesn't seem to be any adverse effects to the surrounding properties. This property was actually a little slice of a larger tract that was rezoned to I-1 several years back. For whatever reason, this front little pieces there didn't get zoned at the time.
Council, have questions? Is there anyone here representing the petitioner? All right, this time, I'll ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this. Anyone here would like to come and speak opposed? Thank you, Ron. I'm going to close this public hearing. We have PC 1812 ordinance amendment. City of Garden City requests an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of Garden City, Georgia, as amended by amending Chapter 90, Article 7, therefore to establish a procedure for making requests for reasonable accommodations in land use, zoning, and development regulations as found and contained in the city's zoning code, to repeal all ordinances in conflict herewith, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes. I'm going to open up this public hearing at this time. Ron, if you'd give us an overview of this, please.
PC 1812 was heard by the Planning Commission at the April 10th, 2018 hearing. The request is to hear a proposed text amendment drafted by the city attorney and to further establish recommendations for approval or denial of said text for the city council. The requested text amendment is to establish procedures for making reasonable accommodations in land use, zoning, and development regulations as contained in the city zoning code. This section is needed where the current text verbiage needed further text in order to clearly outline the accommodations being considered.
Thank you. Council, have questions? Anyone here who would want to come forward and speak in favor of this? Anyone here who would want to come forward and speak opposed? Seeing no movement, I'm going to close this public hearing. We have PC 1813 ordinance amendment. City of Garden City requests an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of Garden City, Georgia, as amended by amending Chapter 90, Article 7, thereof, to require the holding of a special public hearing when a proposed zoning decision is sought to locate or relocate a halfway house, drug rehabilitation center, or other facility for the treatment of drug dependency, to repeal all ordinances in conflict herewith, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes. I'm going to open up this public hearing. Ron, if you'd give us an overview, please.
Case PC 1813 was heard by the Planning Commission at the April 10th, 2018 hearing. The request, the request is to hear a proposed text amendment drafted by the city attorney and to further establish recommendations of approval or denial of said text to the city council. This action is to establish special public hearings, as in accordance with state regulations and the current city code for the type of uses referenced herein. This action is needed to clearly outline the special hearing requirements pertaining to these type uses.
And Jim, this is something by law we have to have. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone on council have questions? Okay. Is there anyone here who would want to come forward and speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here who would want to come and speak opposed? Seeing no movement, I'm going to close this public hearing. Considerations, city council minutes dated 4/2/18 and workshop synopsis 4/9/18. Entertainer motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This time, we're going into our staff reports, and first up is Director of Planning and Zoning, Ron Alexander. Back to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the March 2018, planning and zoning did approximately 75 acts of service during the month. Those services included three cases brought before the Planning Commission, Board of Appeals. Building Department issued 33 building permits, performed 100 onsite inspections, performed 50 plan reviews, and held about 45 meetings in relation to those activities. Additionally, we held about eight hours of training, in-house training associated with that. As the fire marshal, we did 50 onsite inspections, 30 plan reviews, and had about four hours of training associated with that. Flood plane management, we did 40 onsite inspections, 30 plan reviews, and about 40 of the building permits were flood plane related. Other than that, any questions?
Staff, have any questions, Ron? Thank you, Ron. Seems like you're all real busy.
Yes, sir.
Next work, next up is Director of Public Works, Benny Gooch.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is Public Works' report for the month of March. Personnel completed 11 residence requests and 90 work orders for the month of March. Storm drainage on our ditch maintenance was 3,200 feet. And underground stormwater utility repairs was 60 feet. We spent $3,935.25 on street and asphalt repairs, 1,336 miles of shoulder maintenance. Street sweepings was 132 miles. We had six signs that was replaced. Street lights, one was reported out. One new one was requested. In our dry trash, we picked up 11.51 tons for the month, is the same total for the year. On our water operations, we had 110 service orders and 39 work orders for the month. Plant produced 24.705 million gallons of drinking water. No hydrants were replaced or worked on. Our water line services, we had three lateral lines repaired, one main line repaired. Water valves and services, we had 88 locate services, five valve replacements, 84 water cut homes, 88 reconnects, and 62 water cutoffs. Meters, we had 16 meters investigated. 90 was city-initiated re-reads on our meters. One customer requested a reread. On sewer, we had 39 work orders that we completed. We had one gravity main that was inspected and one lateral blockage cleared. And on our manhole services, we had one repair. In our fleet maintenance, we fixed and or repaired 59 vehicles, which brings us to a total of 169. And that completes my report. Is there questions?
Thank you, Benny. Any questions for Vinnie?
I have a question, and I should have asked it earlier and forgot. Do we have a line item budget for relining, repaving, relining these residential streets?
Just, not really. Just our L-MIG. We have our L-MIG.
DOT's annual grant program is our annual street resurfacing?
No, I didn't mean resurfacing. I mean painting the lines.
Oh, for striping?
Restriping, yes.
Well, we've been using the street and asphalt money, yes, for that. We've done some of it, yeah.
Smith Avenue needs it terribly when it's night, and especially if it's raining, you cannot, you don't know where to go. So if you'd look into that, I'd appreciate it.
All right. We have a vendor that we call on for that service occasionally, so we'll get them to quote that as well.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you, Benny. Next up is a report from Chief of Police, Chief Ballard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We're still having a little issue with the amount of calls from the malware system on the city of Savannah with the 911 system, and, but we're still approximately probably at 1,900 calls for the month. We had 59 accidents, and just as a review, we've been looking at some yearly reviews compared to last year. We are down 22% as far as accidents are concerned for this month compared to last year's March. We had 650 traffic violations during the month and arrested 20 DUIs and had approximately 278 speeding violations for the month. The municipal court handled 415 cases. We were able to obtain approximately 250 hours of training for our police officers, and we were involved in a lot of things during March. We had a promotional ceremony for three of our lieutenants. We had the Budweiser Clydesdales here. Barbara O'Neil participated in the St. Patrick's Day Parade. We were involved with Career Day at Gould, and of course, we were involved with the city's annual Easter extravaganza. And always exciting, we received, and are two fully equipped, police cars during the month, so we're getting ready to sign those, so we're excited about those. In reference to code enforcement, we issued approximately 107 15-day notices. 77 cases came into compliance, and we issued five citations. And even though this is a reflection for a month, I wanted to go ahead and announce how we have created a new code enforcement supervisor position involving a police officer, and that started on April the 5th. So that's all I have right now.
Questions for the chief?
Do you want to introduce our new?
Introduce Scott.
I can, if you'd like to, and that new code enforcement supervisor who's here today, Scott Robadier.
I'm here, that's why.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I hear nothing but positive reviews from residents, and I happened to stop today and look at a couple of the signs that was put out, and lo and behold, Scott was the one that wrote them up. So he is a, what I would consider, a working supervisor. So I thank you for that. It's, I think Garden City is going to look wonderful in about a year. I'm very pleased.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our Fire Department, Chief Maderos.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
This is the Fire Department report for March. In March, I ran 203 calls for service for a total of 556 for the year. Three fire incidents, 96 first responder, 11 vehicle accidents, six hazardous incidents, service calls, four service calls, 14 good intent calls, and three false alarms. This month, for training, we had 372 hours, which averaged about 24.87 per firefighter. Assistant Chief Lewis and Sergeant Gregory attended the Fentanyl Response Symposium at Georgia Public Standards and Training. We had one firefighter attend the flammable combustible liquid incidents. We got three more firefighters through the State Evaluator Class at Georgia Public Standards and Training as well. I attended the Public Information Officer Course at Georgia Ports Authority. We welcomed five new part-time firefighters to boost our staff and transition to part-time to full-time firefighters. For community relations, we're continuing to do the senior blood checks. Looking ahead, we're looking to partner with Memorial Medical Center, grant for the schools for the Stop the Bleed Program, and we're continuing training, and we have two firefighters headed up to Gipstic next week to do the pre-inspector training to become adjuncts for them. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next up, city manager updates.
Yes, real quickly, we had our first town hall meeting last week on Thursday, and we had a nice crowd at the gymnasium to talk about what's going on at the city. Want to remind everyone that on April 24th, we have another meeting here at City Hall at 6:00 PM. So anybody who's interested to come out and hear about what's going in Garden City, ask us questions about our service operation. We're going to be conducting another town hall meeting on that evening. That's all.
Thank you. We got a number of items for consideration, and the first one is the resolution for the GCCVV appointment. I'm going to ask clerk to read that, beheading only.
A resolution by the Mayor and Council of Garden City, Georgia, to appoint Ed Chapman, owner-operator of Bahama Joe's, to replace George Mingeldorf as one of the Mayor and Council's representatives on the Garden City Convention and Visitors Bureau Authority for the remainder of Mr. Mingeldorf's term, running from January 1, 2018, through the first regular council meeting in January 2020.
Jim, do we have to take a, ask for a vote for this? Are we, as far as vote as recommendation to nominate him?
No, no, sir. You just need to vote on.
The resolution. Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Entertainer motion on this?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, Georgia City's week.
A resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Garden City, Georgia, to recognize April 22nd through the 28th as Georgia City's week, to encourage all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities.
Entertainer motion on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This is something we've done for about two or three years. Typically, we'll have some activities during the week that shines a spotlight on Garden City and what we do, and our special project coordinator has some events planned for us that will be announced later. So we have a motion and seconded voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, surplus vehicle and equipment?
A resolution by the Mayor and Council of Garden City, Georgia, to classify as surplus property for discarding as salvage or non-servable one JCV Baco and one Ford Crown Victoria by auction to the highest bidder.
Entertainer motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and this is just equipment that has worn out and exceeded its life, and we'll go through the proper channels and auction or bid those off?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and seconded voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything else that needs to come before us tonight? Entertainer motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Second. We are adjourned.